Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Work Session. It's Wednesday, March twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty one. It is two oh one P M. My name is Ty Minzer, Chair of the Board. Vice Chair Commissioner Gilson Edwards is in the boardroom with County Manager Ramiro Chavez. We have Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell and an array of staff from Public Works. So County Engineers Scott Lindblom, Matt Ungelman, and Becky Khan, Angela Slesky, and Daniel Die. Which I sure will be, at appropriate time Scott interviews his team there. The topic today is Transportation Impact Fee Study Update. Public can attend through our Thurston County YouTube channel or join by conference call at three six zero two five two nine zero two zero. PIN is one, two, three, four. We have one hour for today's topic, and I'll start with County Manager Ramiro Chavez.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Commissioner. For Commissioner Minzer and Commissioner Edwards, this is a follow-up briefing related to the traffic impact fees, or transportation impact fees. And I know the documents is the decisions requested. Perhaps we need to pause a little bit on that since Commissioner Mejia is the first time she's going to be hearing about this item. So I think we we need to give a little more time and latitude for Commissioner Mejia to get additional information related to this particular proposal. So I just want to make sure that that it's not an expectation for you to make a decision on this matter today. So I I know there's going to be many questions. As you know, we have received also some comments from the public related to this particular item. So and I'm expecting the for the board members to engage in a very robust question and answer today. So we'll certainly will follow up with any additional information the board may need to make sure that you have all the information before you make an informed decision.
We already?
Yep.
Oh, great. So, uh, thank you again. My name is Scott Lindblom. I'm the County Engineer with Public Works. And as Commissioner Minzer pointed out, we do have some staff with us attending today. And I just want to point out that Daniel Die and Kendrick Brayland are our consulting team from the company of Here and Peers. Were instrumental in helping us develop this this briefing. And they were also joining us in the effort to update our fees in two thousand and twenty. So what I want to do this afternoon is I'm going to just do a really brief intro about what we're here for. And then I'm going to kick it off to Daniel, who kind of walk you through the process that that we went through to update our or to do this update of our traffic impact fees. So as the county manager mentioned, this is a follow-up to briefings we had on June tenth and July fifteenth of two thousand and twenty. And what we're really looking at is an update to our two thousand and twelve Transportation Impact Fee Study that we did. I guess going on now nine years ago. And the update really reflects new project list that shows completed projects, new projects, and projects that have been removed. It also includes the latest traffic data from two thousand and nineteen. And as you're well aware, the community has changed significantly, primarily in growth, since that last study was done nine years ago. And in addition, it looks at our most current growth projections too. So again, from this point going forward. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Daniel, and he will take command central of the slideshow.
Yeah, thank you, Scott. Hopefully, everybody can see and hear, see me well, and he see the screen. We'll go ahead and get started. Please feel free to interrupt. I am not going to be offended if anyone has any questions along the way, or we're happy to take those at the end, whichever is more comfortable for you. Real quick, let's get started. We'll go through the transportation impact fees, a little bit of a one oh one as we have a new commissioner on board. Then we'll go through the updated project list and then provide some options for consideration. So first, what are impact or what are impact fees? So they're one-time charges paid by new development with the idea that growth should pay for growth. So essentially, the the thinking here is development is going to pay to help accommodate those needs and transportation needs that are new. They're part of state law, as you can see from the references there. Thurston County started collecting impact fees in two thousand and thirteen based on that two thousand and twelve study. And these are pretty big businesses, usual for developers. They're used to these impact fees. They see them a lot in a lot of different communities around Western Washington. So a little bit more about what impact fees can fund. Capital system improvements is the biggest thing, projects that are reasonably related to development. And they can only pay for a proportional share of system improvements of projects that are on your capital facilities element. So impact fees cannot pay for ongoing costs such as maintenance or safety improvements by themselves. They can't pay for existing deficiencies. So if you've got an intersection that's already failing your level of service standard, that would not count towards impact fees. We'd take out that portion of the project that is needed to address that deficiency. And they can't call can't pay for projects caused by growth outside of the county. So in the county's case, that involves the county and then or outside of Thurston County and also inside of the incorporated cities. And last but not least, impact fees can't pay for one hundred percent of project costs. So impact fees really are used to help leverage other dollars, be that general fund dollars or different public work sources, as well as state grant, state and federal grants. But impact fees can make a nice local match for those projects. As I said, impact fees are business as usual for developers. As you can see here, here's a list of about seventy-six different communities in Western Washington that charge impact fees, both on the county and city side. They're pretty common, transportation impact fees, I believe is probably the most common impact fee type. But they're they're pretty familiar to the development community.
What page are you looking at there?
Oh, this is page five of the slides.
This one?
Hey, Dan- Daniel, you have page four.
I got it. I got it.
Yep.
Slide five, is that coming through now?
Yep, go ahead.
Should be a table. Yep. Okay, so it looks like, as I said, about seventy-six different communities throughout Western Washington charge these. There are some other communities kind of east of the Cascades as well that charge impact transportation impact fees.
Uh, could I ask a question on that?
Yes.
Ty, I don't know. He said ask questions, so.
Go ahead, go ahead.
You've got those with this page five, that was the jurisdictions, I guess, that have fees. I thought you said state law required that all of them. This isn't everybody.
No, so so state law sets what you can do with impact fees, but not everybody chooses to charge impact fees. There's no requirement to charge impact fees, but a lot of communities do. So no, no state law requirement that you must charge impact fees.
Okay, do you have a comparable, like here you've got four counties listed. Do you have a comparison of costs?
It's coming up.
That's coming up?
We will, yep, we'll get to that in just a few slides.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Hopefully, everybody can see slide six now. It should say how our impact fees charged. Hopefully, that's coming through, so. So fees are only charged for new development. So anything that already exists is not going to be charged impact fees. An impact fee, the the rate study that we developed sets a maximum defensible cost per P M peak hour trip, which basically is just the what's the most you could charge people based on your project list, based on all of the state law requirements for how we discount different project costs. That's your maximum that you could possibly charge. For example, a single-family house generates about one trip in the P M peak hour. So if you think about it, if you or someone else that lives with you comes home in the evening in that P M peak hour, that's probably about one trip. A restaurant, on the other hand, could produce about six to sixteen trips per one thousand square feet of that restaurant, just depending on the type of restaurant. And we have tables that help you figure out how many trips each different type of development will will generate. And all types of development will pay impact fees with state law. It's everybody. There's not a an exception for commercial or an exception for residential. You're paying for both as both residential and commercial development is causing that impact on your transportation system. Final adjustments are made to that cost per trip. So, for example, the maximum defensible rate that we'll show you is sixty-seven hundred dollars for Thurston County. That would equate to about sixty-one hundred dollars for a single-family house. There's a few adjustments that are made to that to account for different things. So it's a little bit lower. And then for each one thousand square feet of a sit-down restaurant, you'd be looking at about a thirty-seven thousand dollar fee. So it's all based on the number of trips they're expected to generate, and that way it's related to the impact on the transportation system. And last but not least on this slide, the maximum fee sets a ceiling, but that is allowed to be reduced by policy across all service areas. So as as you've probably seen in your options today, one of the options we're providing is a fifty percent reduction. That's that's allowed under state law that each community sets by policy anything up to that maximum defensible rate. Here we have a chart showing just the differences in rates across the different counties and cities within Thurston County. As you can see, the current adopted rate is just just a hair over the average for these areas. Kitsap County is very low right now. They're actually in the process of updating their impact fees. They were getting some pushback from their cities within Kitsap County that development was being pushed outside of the city because of the fact that the county's fees were so low. So those are not updated as of yet, but we'd expect those to increase in the next year or two to be a little bit more in line with the rest of the jurisdictions. So moving on to the proposed project list, so we're going to go through a lot of different slides showing you what each of the projects looks like. But just in general, this is a twenty-year list, and it's based on a variety of sources. So the six-year Transportation Improvement Program that Matt and Scott put together and their teams put together, the comprehensive plan, and then just additional projects that Public Works staff have come up with when they think through where they're seeing capacity issues and where they think those are going to happen based on the model and other things. That comes up with a total of thirty-eight projects for a total project cost of about two hundred and forty-three million dollars. And we'll get to this a little bit later, but not all of that is going to be charged to impact fees, even if we were to charge the full rate. But that's just the the total for all of the projects is two hundred and forty-three million dollars. And this does include some completed projects, as Scott mentioned in the beginning. So impact fees can include completed project if the project is continuing to provide additional capacity for growth above what was needed to return a facility to your level of service standard when the project was built. So as an example of that, if you have an always-stop controlled intersection where everybody has to stop at a stop sign and you replace that with a with a mini roundabout, that's probably providing a lot more capacity than what was really needed to fix that problem. So that actually is providing additional capacity for growth above and beyond what was needed. And those types of projects can stay on the list for a little while, and that helps to reimburse the county funds. And it also provides leverage for additional state and federal grant programs so that that local match, when you're reimbursing your program with those impact fees for completed projects, that allows you to build more projects and carry that money and leveraged funds forward.
Daniel, I have a question. Is is it okay, Chair?
Yeah, yeah, please.
Um, so on the, so you mentioned that these impact fees couldn't be used at the very beginning for completed projects, but right now you said they can. Can you explain that, please?
I'm sorry, I don't, if I'm misspoke, I did not mean to say that they cannot be charged for completed projects. They can be charged for completed projects, but they cannot be charged for projects such as, or I'm sorry, I know what I said, but was confusing. So they are not charged to development that has already occurred. These are only charged to new development. So if you already own a single-family home and you sell it, that has not charged any impact fees. If you build a new home, that would be charged impact fees at the time of the building permit.
Okay, thank you.
What about ADUs?
We'll get to ADUs. We've got a slide on that that we slipped in just at the last minute, so we'll get to that towards the end, but thank you, Commissioner. Um, so before we go through the projects, we we broke things down into kind of six major project types to kind of show you what these types of projects are and give you a general sense or a flavor for the project. So first, we start off with widening roads. So that's just literally adding like traffic lanes to help provide more capacity. The second and third one are intersection treatments, adding new traffic signals or new roundabouts to help increase capacity as opposed to an always-stop or a side-street stop. We can put a lot more traffic as traffic grows and as people, as the county grows, there will likely be more of those built just to handle the amount of traffic. The fourth item is adding turn lanes. So often what we see is that it's not the actual roadway segments that kind of break down first. It's your intersections or your particular turns that kind of start to make traffic back up more than the actual need to widen the full through lanes. So adding turn lanes can be really strategic, either with or without changes to the intersection control. And then the last two are just kind of improvements that help capacity in a couple of ways. Widening shoulders actually provides for a little bit of separation between non-motorized users. So if people are walking to the local store or if they're on their bike, that provides a little more room to separate out different users and provides more capacity. And then urban improvements, really mostly if refers to carbon gutter and then sidewalk. And again, kind of separating those modes out a little bit more can help improve capacity for vehicles.
Uh, you you mentioned widening shoulders and that is a safety issue. But earlier you said you couldn't use these fees for safety issues. I didn't understand that.
No, that's a, that's a great question. So impact fees themselves can't pay for safety-related portions of projects. So if you were to have an an example project is a crosswalk where you're adding a new signalized crosswalk, that's probably not going to be impact fee eligible because that is only safety-related. But for things like widening shoulders where that you're increasing capacity and also increasing safety, you can charge those projects just because they're increasing capacity. So the fact that you're not.
If I may, Daniel, I'll just jump in here. Impact fees can be charged for any project that provides an element of capacity. So so long as we can make a capacity argument about it, then it's reasonable to include in the impact fee program. Projects all often address a number of needs. That could include a safety need, that could include a bit of rehabilitation. So we do do some calculations. I think we'll walk through some of those calculations a little later in the slideshow to show kind of how we strip out those ineligible costs.
Thank you. Thank you for that question. So here's a quick overview, and I don't expect you to be able to see too much on this map. We'll get into the individual areas. But this just gives you a general overview. We've got projects all over the county, as you can see here. And let's go ahead and move through and talk about each of the individual service areas. So this first service area is the central U G A's area, U G A areas. So the urban growth areas surrounding Lacey, Tumwater, and Olympia. We've got a number of projects in this area that address a number of needs. We've got lots of road widening in this area where we're kind of experiencing more growth next to the cities. There's kind of more need for widening roads, roundabouts, and some of those urban improvements and widening shoulders. So you'll see those pop up a bit. You will also notice in red with the asterisk, we've marked some of the projects that are already either in designer and construction. So some of these projects are kind of already in process, but impact fees can help pay for those. Here's a second set of those central U G A projects, just because we couldn't fit them all on one side. Again, you'll see the same, lots of road widening, shoulders, some turn lanes and such. In the east service area, we've got a number of projects, especially around Geel. You can see again lots of roadway widening, lots of shoulder widening, some turn lanes, and some urban improvements. In the north service area, we have just a few projects, not too many, because there's not a huge amount of growth or capacity issues that we've seen there. But we've got three projects there, including Johnson Point, which is already in designer construction. And again, just kind of across the board, different needs for projects there. In the west and northwest area, again, just a few projects because we don't have a huge amount of growth. Just three there, Mud Bay and Evergreen Parkway. We're actually going to be wrapping up a project on choosing an art, a preferred alternative for that interchange shortly with the county. And then you've got a couple of other options, a couple of other projects shown there. The south service area actually has a number of projects, especially around the Grandbound Urban Growth Area. There's lots of growth occurring down there, and so that's causing or providing a need or identifying a need for a lot of capacity projects down there. We'll actually have two slides for the south area with a couple of these projects already in design. Again, kind of across the board, different project types, both on this side and the next side. And then you can see a couple of projects under designer construction here.
So, Daniel. So you have an asterix stating the current and their design and construction for those projects who they are not having an asterix. Have we completed or we're pla- oh, those are future projects?
Those are future projects. So they've been identified through one of your plans or through consultation with Public Works staff. But the ones that don't have an asterisk are are kind of future projects that are, they've been identified as being needed to accommodate growth in the county in the future, but they're not kind of in that more designer-construction phase yet.
So I I have, if you can go back one slide.
Yep, this one.
Project eleven.
Okay.
And I know the the county improved Rich Road, and that was using the County Road Administration Board grant money. Is that correct, Scott? Crab?
Yes, it is correct. We, it was the rap.
So this new project on Rich Road goes from the Shuts River to Normandy. The plan is to add additional lanes, and that is the purpose of including this on the traffic impact fee. Is that correct?
The Rich Road is paying back the road fund because that project was completed. Oh, when was that completed, Matt? Twenty fourteen?
I was gonna say twenty fifteen.
Go ahead.
So that might be a good, a good explanation to have because that's the purpose of my question. Because there is some projects in here that have been completed. And 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 I think it will reserve an explanation as to why they are included in the traffic impact fees.
If I may, I'll step in there, Daniel. So I appreciate that question, and that can be kind of a counterintuitive aspect. So the first step that we took when we went with city staff in identifying projects for inclusion in this program were eligible projects, and so projects that included a capacity element that had been included on a capital facilities element that were within the right-of-way of streets and roads, and also that provided capacity for future growth. And so I think, you know, Commissioner, what I'm hearing from you is, well, this widening has already occurred. Why are we paying it for impact or why are we including it in our impact fee question?
As a matter of clarification, this Ramiro, not a Commissioner.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
Go ahead, sorry.
The question is very good.
It was a leading question, more than anything else.
Yes, no, it's a good question. This project is eligible because it provides capacity for future growth. It's not overly congested right now. It it still is something that provides us with capacity. So from the the basis of being something that can be included in the program based on state law, it meets all of those eligibility requirements. The second piece to crafting a program, which we'll get into in a little bit here, is really talking about how does the program, how do rates differ by different areas of the county? And so, as you know, you have a program that's in place today. Different areas of the county pay different amounts. And that the contributing factors are how much growth is occurring in that in that area of the county and the number of projects on the impact fee project list and what their relative impact is. And that's, you know, those two factors together are how we arrive at a recommended rate by kind of area of the county. So when we were looking to update the program, because a program was, existing program was in place, I think there was some intentionality around trying to smooth out those differences as much as possible. So by keeping kind of a mixture of program, projects that have already been constructed but are still providing capacity, again, eligible, and future projects, we were able to kind of craft a program that had rate levels that were more similar to what we've got today, such that as this new program phases in, it's it's a little smoother, it's more predictable for the development community, rather than having something that's wildly different than what's in place today. I hope that that helps a bit to answer that question.
Thank you. You said there are two factors as to why rates differ by area of the county. One is the rate of growth of that area of the county. What was the second one?
The the mix of projects. So again, if if all of the projects were in one area of the county, their rate would probably be a lot, a lot more. And that that makes sense because they would be benefiting from the program more. So there's an aspect to fairness within impact fee programs that the rate that you charge actually does have to be on the measured usage of the system based on the growth that is being planned for.
What extent is this area-by-area approach prescribed by state law? I mean, versus being able to say, look, we're one county, we're growing, people are moving to different parts of the county. We're growing the system in a way that makes more sense for the county. Everybody should share in that, in that, as we grow, like in the aggregate. Is it required that we break it down by like neighborhood by neighborhood?
It's not. So to go at the basic kind of premise of your question, state law requires that we've got a reasonable nexus between developments, impacts, and the rate that we're charging. So when you've got an area that is very large, such as a county, there is kind of more of a need for accounting for that than you might have in a city. And I think maybe one thing you're thinking about is some recent case law, Dribic versus the City of Olympia. In that recent case law, it was found that they actually could have a citywide impact fee program. And it was permissible to say that, you know, one rate is fine because everybody uses these transportation systems. And that's that's permissible in a much smaller geographic scale like a city. But when you get out to a county that's very large geographically, it's harder to make that argument. And that's why it's typical. And I think all of the county systems that at least we showed on that screen, Snohomish, Pierce, Kitsap, and Thurston all have these more districted systems to kind of do that level of accounting.
I get that, but it also gives me, it gives me, it seems a little bit strange to have a certain type of project included in one area and not in another area, just to try to smooth out the rate because growth isn't happening. That seems unfair kind of on the flip side. But I guess you're just trying to balance a lot of factors.
So maybe, and I think to address it to a certain extent, that is the trip distribution. They they goes from a development, the trip distribution, it affects other areas of the traffic. areas of the traffic impact fee. Are you going to touch base on the trip distribution?
Yeah, we, we have a slide coming up.
Because that, that's key though, meaning all the, all the impact fee generated within a certain area, a hundred percent doesn't stay in that area.
Correct. Yeah. So it is, it is proportionally added out. So people are kind of paying for their impacts, whether it's in their own service area or to a smaller amount to a service area further away. So we will get to that in a few slides. That's correct.
Maybe just one quick follow up. Are you counting Rochester as a urban area? Is that what I'm kind of seeing here? That'd be on page twenty one on the slide.
Yeah, well, Daniel, I don't know if we have a slide that shows what our impact fee districts are. Rochester, of course, is unincorporated. So it's in that south area there.
Yep.
And what I'm wondering about is like you've got Old Ninety Nine, Rich Road, an activity there, you've got it, the one where your asterisk is, and you show that as an urban improvement. And those are out, you know, quite a ways. I mean, Elderberry is quite a ways out. I'm just wondering how you classify as an urban area if there's no city limits? I mean, I think Grand Mound maybe has an urban development area or something.
UGA.
Is that what it's, is that what it's referring to?
UGA, that's what it is.
And the term urban improvements is really just a characterization that that project is really taking, you know, a county road that lacks a lot of amenities and adding additional amenity that's providing some additional capacity, is providing some additional multimodal safety on that roadway. And so we, we call that urban improvement. We could also just call that roadways being built to standards. That's, that's a bit of a term of art and I could understand how that could lead to confusion in that specific location.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
The best way to describe it is the project includes improvement that you would more likely see in like in the city, like sidewalks and streetlights and that type of improvement.
Thanks, Matt. With that, we will go ahead and move on to this next slide, which actually walks through a little bit of how we get from that $243 million project list down towards the eligible impact fee costs. So this is kind of prescribed by state law. This is very formulaic to some extent. We start with that eligible project list of about $243 million. And then we say, okay, if there's anything already existing deficient, that's not meeting your LOA standards, we can't charge new development for that because that's something that's really the county's responsibility to fix. It's not new development's responsibility to fix existing problems. Then we take what's left over and that's the portion due to new growth. Kind of those things that are needed to increase capacity, to provide adequate facilities for that new growth. And then we, we take a further haircut of growth outside of the unincorporated county. So anything that is coming in from Pierce County, anything that's going into or out of your incorporated areas like Olympia and Yelm, those are taken, that growth is not due to county development. And so we have to take out a portion of that through our travel modeling. And that just leaves us with the growth in an unincorporated county. So this is really saying, if you're developing in the county, you're causing impacts to the, to the transportation system in the county. And those are the eligible impact fee cost. So that, that gets us from a top line of $243 million for those 38 projects, already down to $90 million worth of impact fee eligible projects. So if, go ahead.
And you want to just touch on development and tribal lands as well?
Yep. Yeah. So, and as part of those unincorporated areas, so this only accounts for unincorporated county, which does not include cities, it does not include state lands or federal lands, and it also does not include tribal lands because those are not under the jurisdiction of the county. So any kind of growth within those areas is not accounted for and is not charged impact fees under the county's program. As we saw earlier, plenty of the cities have their own impact fee programs, but that's kind of completely separate from the county's program. And if we, so when we get to that $90 million worth of eligible fees, if we were to collect 100% of the maximum defensible rate and we were to collect every last dollar of the impact fee or every last dollar of impact fees that are chargeable to development, you'd end up with about $90 million, give or take, in collections over the 20 years of this program. If we go with kind of your option two of a 50% reduction, that would kind of cut your, the amount of money that you could collect in total about in half, so about $45 million would help fund transportation improvements due to impact fees. As we were saying, kind of everything is, everything is assigned out proportionally. So we don't say that anything happening on one side of the county is fully chargeable to the other side of the county and vice versa. So here we have an example of some of our modeling results from the Marvin and Mullen intersection, kind of just the east of Lacy's, UGA. And this really shows you where trips that are kind of heading through that project are headed to or from. So as you can see, 17% of those trips are kind of headed outside of the county, 40% are headed into the UGA area. 26% are headed into Olympia, Tom Water and Lacy. 11% are headed into Yelm. So already this is where we're accounting for that. We're counting for two different things here. One, we're accounting for that growth that's not within the county. That's kind of within the incorporated areas or external. And we're also accounting for the amount of trips there within that area. So as you can see, the west area, about 1% of the trips headed through that intersection are affected, or, or about one of the, 1% of trips that are starting or ending in the west area are heading through that intersection. So they're paying a very small amount of the, the portion of that project versus the east area would be paying the most compared to that. And this holds true for each of the different projects. So if we were to look at a Grand Mound project, we would see most of the project costs are attributed to the south area with very little being attributed to the north or the northwest. And that kind of holds true throughout all of them. With this, we, we have kind of grouped our service areas a little bit to, to meet that nexus prescribed by state law. So we have included the UGAs in the east and in the south, those are included within their areas. So the Grand Mound UGA is included within the south. And then we have a separate service area for the central UGAs for the Olympia, Tom Water, Lacy UGAs. Basically, what we've seen through our modeling is that the way that we've grouped it is very reasonable to make sure that those trips are proportionally paying for their share of improvements throughout the areas. A little bit on the types of development. So as I said earlier, impact fees are charged to all uses, residential, commercial, it doesn't matter. There are some options though for some exemptions. So state law allows for low end, for the reduction of impact fees for low income housing, which has a specific definition in state law. I can, I can forward you the, all the information about that. But it's tied essentially to your median family income. And so the county can choose by policy to exempt that affordable housing up to 80% with no other impact to the county.
Do you want to advance the slide?
Is it not advanced? It's advanced on my slide, but it should be showing slide 25.
Nope, showing 24 at this point.
Okay, let me try moving it over again.
You are on 25.
Okay, slide 25.
Maybe it was my screen. That's odd.
Yeah, I think it's maybe lagging for, either lagging from my end or lagging from someone's side. So no worries. The joys of screen sharing. So, so up to 80%, you can just by policy say affordable housing doesn't have to pay for 80% of their impact fee rate. They would still pay the 20% and, but that's kind of a significant reduction. If the county chooses to exempt any portion of the rest of that 20%, then that would need to be backfilled by other funds. So that could be a transfer from another account into the impact fees. So essentially the county is paying for that 20% of developers' fees. So they, it, it's essentially saying someone has to pay for those impact fees so that it's fair to all development. But that kind of can just be transferred in. And there are other.
You, you did make a comment here on, you said, I think, I don't know, maybe you meant to say low income housing exemptions right above accessory dwelling units? But you said affordable housing.
Yeah. So low income and affordable are used interchangeably quite often in state law. It's low income.
Well, how do you, how do you determine affordable? Because I don't think we have any affordable housing.
So I will state, yes, low income is, has a very specific definition within state law. It is related to the median family income in the county. And there is a calculation at what the rent could be for that. Affordable housing is a much looser definition. And if you by policy determine something to be affordable, what impact fee state law includes, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of describe it. And I don't know if it's something that is palatable to the, the county or not. You can essentially, you, you do have some discretion to exempt impact fees from uses that are considered to have broad public purposes, which many communities would define affordable housing. Different types of, you could think of different types of services that are, that are beneficial, that, that might fall in that category that you think are really great. Now here's the, here's the hook on it is that unless it's in that very narrowly defined low income housing category, which you can exempt up to 80% and just not pay back those funds. If you're exempting these other uses, you actually do need to reimburse impact fee accounts from non-impact fee accounts. You're gonna have to find other dollars to essentially reimburse the account. So hopefully that helps demystify that term a little bit. We do often as practitioners throw around the terms low income and affordable. But you are correct that in impact fee, the, the kind of state statute surrounding that, there is a very firm definition on what low income housing is defined as.
And then I guess I cut you off there on accessory dwelling units.
Yeah, no, that's perfect. I apologize for conflating those two terms. They, we often use them interchangeably, but in state law, they mean very different things. So I apologize for that. On the accessory dwelling units, those are not currently covered in the fee schedule that we've provided. But I took a look at what some other communities have done. Pierce County does list accessory dwelling units in their impact fee schedule. And what they've done is essentially just cut in half the overall fee because there's less transportation impacts from an accessory dwelling unit. So if that's something the county would like us to look at, we could look at that. Other jurisdictions just don't even put a rate for an accessory dwelling unit. So they may do that on a case by case basis, or they just may say, oh, that counts as another single family home. Or they may say it counts for an apartment or, you know, there's kind of a wide variety of what jurisdictions are doing based on that. But there, there are some options to reduce the rate for that, for accessory dwelling units. And last but not least, go ahead, Commissioner.
So on ADU, you're saying we don't charge anything at all?
No. So right now there is not a distinction in the accessory dwelling units in your current code. A, or in your current fee schedule. Accessory dwelling units are a fairly new concept. They weren't as, as common back in 2012 or as talked about. Go ahead, Kendra.
So that's, that's kind of what we would call maybe an emerging use. So right now you don't have it in your fee schedule. And so I would suspect that at the counter, when somebody's coming for a building permit for an accessory dwelling unit, it probably determine, it probably depends on the discretion of that person working at the counter and determining whether or not they should be charged a fee. It, it may be advisable if you see a lot of ADUs in your future to actually define a rate. I think, Daniel, you, you pulled up an example from Pierce County and that they charged essentially a multifamily rate, so about half the single family rate. We have been working more and more with some communities that have incorporated ADU rates into their impact fee programs. I've worked with the City of Portland, they've included one. The City of Redmond certainly included one. I think Redmond's rate is somewhere in that, that 50% range. When, if, if, if a development doesn't fall into one of the categories that we have on the fee schedule, they can always do an independent fee calculation, which that also might be going, what's going on at your, your, your fee counter. So if you think it's important, we can certainly add that to the schedule.
I personally do not think it's important. I don't want to drive the price of housing up any more than it is any, any way, shape or form. I mean, I'm just expressing my personal opinion on that.
Well, I, I think it's really important to have clarity. I don't like the idea that somebody goes to the counter and one guy has to pay a full single family residence impact fee and the next guy doesn't pay anything. That doesn't seem right at all. So I think we need to clarify what the policy is, even if the policy is we're not charging for ADUs. But then that segues to my other question. I didn't quite understand the idea of 80%, up to 80% exemption for low income housing. And then somebody said 20%. We have to backfill the, so I don't understand. What do we have to backfill with other funds for the exemption?
I'll explain that. You are allowed for, again, development that falls within the definition of low income housing, which that is prescribed in state law. And we'd be happy to kind of follow up with that specific language. You are allowed to exempt up to 80%. So in that case, if you're, for example, coming with low income housing development proposal, you would end up needing to pay an impact fees 20, up to 20, 20% of what it would say on that fee schedule. So if you were a single family home, you would have some amount. If you're able to establish that you're low income housing, then you really only owe 20% of that amount. The county may, if it wishes, choose to exempt, and this is something that many communities have done, choose to exempt the whole amount of impact fees. But you would need to reimburse impact fee accounts for that 20%.
Perfect. Got it. So we can do it without, the 80%, we can just do it and everybody else backfill. But if we're gonna go all the way to 100, we have to shore up that 20%.
That is correct.
And right now, what does the county do regarding low income housing? Nothing?
I think that's actually a provision that was added to state law. Kendra, correct me if I'm wrong. That was actually added after the 2012 program was adopted.
I would need to look at what you guys are doing today. What I would say is that Commissioner Minster, this is not something that every jurisdiction applies. It's an option. And so some do and some don't.
I get it. I'm just trying to figure out if we do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
These are, these are great questions. I really appreciate everybody's engagement on this as we go through. So. So last but not least, we covered this earlier, but incorporated, so the cities, the state, the federal and the tribal land, they're not included in the impact fee program, just because they're not under the jurisdiction of the county. So they are neither, kind of, they're, they're not paying for impact fees. So that was one of the questions we had. So with that, we did have the proposed 20-year project list. Like I said, 38 projects, a total of $243 million. Reduced down to $90 million of that is eligible for impact fees. And we've got a couple of options that are kind of in your packet. One is the no rate reduction. That would be about $6,100 per new single family home. The second would be a 50% rate reduction, which would be about 30,000 or start, excuse me, $3,050 per single family home. This is kind of averaged across all of your service areas. And then the third option is kind of a, a different direction from the commissioners. As a reminder, we've hit on this several times, but it's residential and commercial developments are paying for it. And then we just kind of went through the low income housing exemptions in the last slide. Here is a quick rate comparison, showing you in the kind of dark green, the current rates for each service area. In the light blue, the new full rate. So if you were to charge that maximum defensible rate, which averages out. which averages out to be about sixty-seven hundred dollars per trip, then the dark blue is kind of that fifty percent reduction. So you can see, things are kind of bouncing around a little bit as the, the project lists have been updated, as the growth estimates have been updated. Things are not gonna stay exactly flat, so some rates go up, some rates go down when you compare the current rate and the fifty percent reduced rate. But you can see the average is going up just a smidge. The current average across all the different service areas is about thirty-one hundred dollars versus the new fifty percent reduction rate is about thirty-three fifty. So, so looking at a, an increase of about two hundred and fifty dollars on average for that per-trip rate. A couple other things before I turn it over to Scott. Here's just a quick reminder of kind of where those other rates are sitting. Again, as a reminder, Kitsap is very low right now, but will likely increase pretty significantly. We don't know how much they're gonna increase yet because they haven't gone through that yet, but they're in process. So you can see the Thurston County currently adopted rate, and then the Thurston County fifty percent reduction for the new rate over there is the last column. And with that, hearing no other questions, I'm gonna turn it over to Scott for a quick update on the impact fees and then kind of next steps.
Yeah, thank you, Daniel. What we have here is, is the impact fee report for two thousand twenty, and we presented this to the commissioners in late two thousand twenty. And we're really presenting it here based on some questions that came in about how much impact fee revenue we've generated since the impact fee program started nine years ago. And since that time, we've collected just over nine point nine million dollars of impact fees. Adding on the interest to that, which we do collect, we have received a total of ten point three million dollars since two thousand thirteen. And I wanna kind of steer you to the expenditure side of the chart here as well because I think it's important to note that as these fees started to come in, we have been using them more and more, and that we've been using them to leverage local money. So the impact fee money for state and federal grants, and we've been very successful at doing that. And in two thousand twenty-one, so this year, we're projecting to spend about one, or to spend, yeah, about one point two million dollars of the impact fees, and we expect that to continue to grow as we continue to use this money to leverage for state and federal grants. Just this year alone, we're using about eight hundred thousand dollars of impact fees to help support the Mullen Road project. We're programming to spend another hundred thousand of impact fees on the Johnson Point and Hawks Prairie intersection to advance that design. And another hundred thousand dollars to advance the project at Little Rock Road and one hundred thirteenth Avenue, which is a intersection and a bridge project. But again, both those two projects that have a hundred thousand dollars, we're using those to leverage for other, other grant funds as well. Next slide, please. So that brings us, see, we're, I guess, near the conclusion of our presentation. Daniel highlighted a couple of the options that, that we presented last year and we're presenting again today. And as the county manager mentioned earlier, we are not expecting a decision today. I, I think that, that's an excellent point because this is a very complex issue. And I think it's really important that, that the commissioners feel comfortable with whatever decision they have moving forward. So we are certainly prepared to come back another time or provide any other info you need. But as Daniel mentioned, the, the options that we're proposing for consideration are certainly the option one, which is the maximum defensible rate with no reduction. We're not necessarily recommending that, that is an option. What that would result in is about a six thousand one hundred dollar average per trip end. Again, it's legally defensible, provides the most funding allowable. Certainly, the con is that it is the biggest impact to development in the, in the area.
Which page are you on right now?
This is actually in your briefing packet on page three. We thought we'd put it.
Okay, we're switching to a different packet?
No, you, you, you have it on, on, it's right here. He's talking about this.
Okay, good enough. So we went back to the second page of your, yeah, yes, okay, got it.
Okay. And so if the, if the option to pursue the maximum defensible rate were to put in place, it would create the Thurston County impact fee rates significantly higher than other jurisdictions in the county. The option two, as Daniel mentioned, too, is a fifty percent reduction in the rates. This is a consistent approach as other county jurisdictions, and it is the approach we've taken for the last nine years as well. There's no real change in how we calculate the rates. Again, the, the impact fee cons, or it does increase the cost to developers. And as Daniel pointed out, in three of the six areas, the impact fee rates would increase. In three of the areas, it actually decreases a bit. And I do want to add a note that last, I believe it was last June, we did receive a letter of support for option two from the Olympia Master Builders. And in my discussions with them, they recognized that impact fees do fund critical transportation improvements. And we did get that letter of support, which we can certainly provide again if you are interested. And finally, the option three, which is always an option that, that you have, is to provide a different direction for us. Or certainly, we are wide open to providing any more information or answering any other questions you might have. But that ends the formal presentation, and we open it up to any questions or feedback.
I have a question. I gotta check with the chair.
Okay, that's good. Yeah, now I can see all the commissioners. So I'll go ahead with Commissioner Edwards, and I'll go to Commissioner here.
Scott, that letter from the Olympia Master Builders, I have one in my packet here that's in July, two thousand twenty. Is it, is that the same one?
Yeah, it's the same one, yeah.
Okay.
Um, yes, so, you know, from what I gathered from the presentation, we've only spent two point, around two point three million dollars from this. How many projects in total have been actually completed since two thousand thirteen?
We could, you, you mean those that are funded by impact fees?
Yes.
We'd be happy to provide that information. I, I, it'll take a few minutes to put it together, but I can certainly provide that to the board.
Thank you.
You bet.
If I could expand on that a little bit, in the presentation, on the list of projects, all the ones that have an asterisk next to them have impact funding as part of the funding package for those projects.
But those have not been completed yet, is what I gathered.
Correct. So you wanted us to go back to, since two thousand thirteen, to see which projects have been completed that include impact fee funding?
Correct. I would like to see those numbers, yes.
It's not a project list, but this graph on page twenty-nine, doesn't that show the sort of expenditure history from the dollars?
Yes.
Of course, that doesn't tell you which that project was funded with.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that question.
Yeah, I couldn't hear it either.
Oh, I was just, I was trying to be helpful and say that on slide twenty-nine, responsive to Commissioner Mejia's question, there's a graph that shows the expenditure of the impact fees by year. It's not tied to a project list, but it would give her a sense of how much has gone to, from the impact fee that's gone to project year by year. Go ahead, did you have more, Commissioner here?
I do not.
Okay.
Could, could I clarify something on that?
Yes.
Scott, I just want to make sure, so all the different projects that you're talking about, the whole cost of the project might not have been, you know, total impact fees. You were leveraging the impact fees to get more money to do a bigger job or something like that, right?
Yeah, correct, and that's a good clarification. So as I think Daniel might have mentioned, we, we can't use impact fees to fund one hundred percent of a project, but we have been. And as you're well aware, we use local money to leverage state and federal grants routinely. And so this is exactly what we've been using impact fees for, for a large part. So it doesn't fund the whole project, but it is instrumental in helping us get the whole package of funding together.
Okay, I'd just like to comment that I think, and this might have come from Olympia Master Builders, I'm not sure of that. But for each thousand dollars of additional cost to a home, it eliminates, boy, a, a big number of potential buyers due to the inability then to continue financing or what. So I just want to say right up front, I am not in favor of any increases. If I'm in favor of something, I'm, I'm, so, so fifty percent would be the minimum, but I'd want to be even less than that if I could, because I don't see that we're creating affordable housing. We just keep, keep adding costs, not just here, but I mean everywhere. The costs are driving people into a situation that they cannot, may never be able to afford affordable or attainable housing. So that's kind of where I'm at on that. A good presentation, though.
Could I suggest next steps?
I'm gonna ask county manager to kind of frame where we're at and what we need to do.
Yeah. Maybe we can probably have another briefing, a little more specific in this case. Maybe in the next two, three weeks, if that is possible. Including the, the analysis of accessory dwelling units.
What was that, sir?
Analysis of the accessory dwelling units, just to give the board the option to accept, exempt those parts of that. Because the concern, as I shared with Commissioner Minster, is when an accessory dwelling unit comes to the counter, it, it will be up to the individual receiving that application to make a judgment decision whether to charge or not. I think the board needs to be very clear as to what the intent is related to accessory dwelling units. Also, it will be good to have the next briefing, a conversation related to all the many different exceptions the board may have available to them. And at the same time, we'll bring the list of projects that have been completed since two thousand and thirteen. Maybe take a little time, not just listing the projects, just the type of improvements, and how much the project cost, how much the traffic impact fees have contributed to that project, and any other funding sources they have been able to leverage since two thousand and thirteen. That will be my suggestion.
Yes, we can certainly pull that information together.
That was my suggestion to the board.
Okay, is that a thumbs up from the board on that approach?
Sure.
Okay, that sounds good, Romero. There's some specifics we should, and then, you know, then we can
Right.
Try to give some directions back on.
We could also bring back some information about that low-income housing exemption, if that would be helpful to the board.
Yeah, including all the potential exemptions the, the board has.
Got it.
Really to do it, yeah.
I, I guess, you know, just a last comment, I think it's embedded in what you said, Romero, but just that, I, I guess I'd like to have a little bit of information in terms of like, what's the alternative? Like, let's say you reduce impact fees by another fifty percent. Now you've got your project list, you're still gonna need to deal with those road improvements. So, you know, maybe looking at the financial plan of the road fund or whatever other, whatever other fund sources are there so that you're comparing the choice about the impact fees versus what is the alternative. Right now, we're just operating in a vacuum. Well, yeah, I don't want to charge people money for stuff. It'd be easy for me to sit here and say, let's just get rid of impact fees so that, but, but that's not, that's not responsible, looking at the big picture. So a little bit of the big picture of what's the alternative way of dealing with the road impact is probably useful in the conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, everybody. We're adjourned for today, and we'll be zipping right back into a C-PAD briefing on Dr.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Take care, everyone.